Good evening, President Ashka and members of the board, members of the audience. Oh, you're starting, sorry. I'm not starting, sorry.
Ready to start? I'd like to call the February 16th, 2017 Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors Study Session to order. And if we could first start with a flag salute, we'll move on from there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the primary subject of our study session today is the Academic Equity and Access Report, and I do believe that we're ready for that presentation.
We are ready. We are very ready, as you can tell. We postponed this from an earlier meeting, so we are more than ready. So I apologize for jumping in there a little quickly. So good evening, President Ashka, members of the board, members of our audience here and at home. Tonight, I'm joined by Ms. Justina Johnson, Mr. Patrick Johnson, Principal Cindy Johnson, teacher leaders Amanda Christosimo, and Matthew Heverly. We're here to discuss and learn about how we are reducing and eliminating achievement gaps, academic achievement gaps, through high-quality equity and access practices. In our brief time together, we will specifically address two of these practices: cultural responsiveness, professional learning for staff, and providing access for high school students in rigorous courses. See, now I'm all clustered.
So I'm just going to reiterate what Marie just introduced. I want to be really clear to the board and to the public that we're, tonight, we're just focusing on two areas of academic equity: cultural responsiveness and then access to core rigor. If you look at the circles, I think this is a great graphic because it shows you all the other important areas and aspects of equity work in TPS. So as you listen to my, this is the assignment for the board, is that we want you to really listen and think of other areas that, I believe that this conversation's going to bring up other areas where you'd like to know more. Please jot down any questions or areas that you'd like to have for information in future Friday reports. This work to close our achievement gap is everyone's responsibility. We take it very seriously, and we won't rest until we've eliminated that achievement gap. And we know that the work that's being done right now in these two areas is going to, is working toward getting us there.
And I would just like to thank the board and all of the people who are responsible for working on Policy 3111. The work around this policy has really helped us to streamline the strategies and the work that we need to do in order to develop our school district. So we want to thank you for setting those clear and explicit expectations and guidelines regarding our values around equity as a district. Our policy points out that equity strategies are planned, systemic, and focused on the core of teaching and learning process, and that's really the framework by which we would like to operate in the district.
Good evening. Tonight, you have two documents in front of you. Please take a look and review the Office of Academic Equity and Access poster provided. The current version of the vision, mission, and goal for equity in the Tacoma Public Schools took a few years of revisions before finalizing alignment to the district strategic plan and the district equity policy. This work was completed in 2015 by the district equity team collectively and is now posted in all of our facilities and used to communicate our equity, vision, mission, and goal. The second document that you have in front of you is on cultural responsive schools, and I'd like for you to take a look at that. It outlines what culturally responsive schools should look like, sound like, and feel like. Culturally responsive school posters are available as a reminder of the work that we're conducting. This document was created by the district equity team with a focus on implementation of the key principles of equity, which is awareness, attitude, analysis, action, and accountability. These are taken from Javas's toolkit. All school office coordinators have been briefed on the equity policy and components of culturally responsive schools, basically because those are the first people that people see when they walk into the school building. Culturally responsive schools' components are covered in the equity policy training provided to all staff through our professional development course offerings. That was the slide that kind of went with everything that I said. So if you want to take just a few minutes to take a look at that, that's great.
And just for clarity, those are specific trainings that are offered throughout the district for staff.
And those were offered first semester and some carried over to second semester, and we've added additional ones for second semester as well.
So a lot of them consist basically of book studies that are currently going on.
One of the things we're really excited about this year is our district equity team. Our team is comprised of several different areas of the district: teachers, instructional coaches, and so on and so forth, and it's representing pretty much the wide gamut of our district. We've gone from a faithful few of maybe about 12 last year, representing 12 different schools or six different schools, to a full capacity of 60 members and, on average, having about 45 participants at each of our meetings. So we're really excited about the growth in that area as far as having those cultural conversations and providing a place to have the safe conversation around getting those cross-cultural conversations happening, so that people from the district equity team can come and gather skills to support at the building level and the alignment of all the initiatives. By decreasing the opportunity gaps that we have for students, we're hoping to increase success for all students and decrease those achievement gaps. As a result of data-driven equity and leadership work, schools have identified specific goals around disproportionate discipline and achievement among students of color, gender, poverty, and ELL students. What we know is that strong quality instruction significantly reduces the likelihood of classroom discipline issues. And by promoting strong engagement strategies in the classroom that meet the needs of our diverse learning student populations, we increase student time on task and access for students to the curriculum. For example, more student discourse, critical thinking, and processing of information. Our department encourages a more facilitative collaborative approach to teaching that reinforces active learning. Students will also need to learn how to prepare for exams by developing strong study habits and study skills, and schools adopting aversive and school-wide avid strategy seem long-term success. We also have a coaching and leading team that meets quarterly, and that is representing various populations of our district as well, from student services, instructional coaches, elementary, middle, and high school representatives, and central administration offices, office workers. And basically, when we go to those coaching and leading for racial equity meetings, our big, over-umbrella question that we ask ourselves is what is the impact of the decisions that we make as leaders in the school district? Intent versus impact is something that we look at all the time, and we know that implicit versus explicit bias happens from time to time, and it's really about learning how to identify those things and combat those issues of concern that we have for our kids. At this time, I'd like to introduce Matt Heverly. He is a language arts teacher at Baker Middle School, and he is a veteran member of our district equity team. And part of our goal is to develop leadership and capacity within our teacher leaders so that they can go back and be leaders at the building and feel confident in doing this work at their school sites. And so Matt is one of those teacher leaders that we are really excited about who has carried that work over to his building, so we'd like for him to talk a little bit about his interactions at his school at Baker.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. We noticed over the past couple of years at Baker that we seem to have lost a little something in how we connect with our students. Lots of things have happened over the past couple of years, as you all know, and so we didn't, we felt like we had lost touch with some of our students, and we needed to take a look at how our practices, how we do things affects our students both positively and negatively, knowing that we can be the trigger that sets a kid off for a day, ruining their day. And so we had to take some hard looks at what we are doing. And so to start that process, we've started having courageous conversation groups once or twice a month, depending on time, where we try to really focus in on practices that we have going on in our classes, trying to bring some, you know, misunderstandings about things, knowing that there's never going to be an answer to these things, just have the conversations keep going, try to develop a safe environment in which to have these conversations. Our group is small, but we are growing it, and it's always open to everybody. We also have, all of our grade levels are currently reading the book Hanging in There by Jeffrey Benson, with some practical how-to strategies, you know, some case studies, things like that, that we can apply to our students because these, our students have now kind of shifted a little bit in how they were many years ago. I don't mean that in a negative way, I just, it's different, it's just different. We look at our data through a lens of who we are targeting, who gets the write-ups, and I think everybody here at the tables knows who those students predominantly are. Mostly, our young black males are being overrepresented in this, and it is a constant battle to figure out better ways of dealing with them, making them more successful, really trying to get them to see, you know, to be more positive with them. In light of certain things that have happened within the past year, we now are trying to be a resource for our students who may identify themselves as immigrants, or dreamers, or young black males, and we are trying to get them access to any knowledge they might need about their rights when out in public, and understanding what they should do. We've been trying to help them with that. And then we also, and specifically at the eighth grade level, we've noticed that our students seem to be, for lack of a better term, lacking emotional stability and maturity that we have seen in the past with kids this age. So we have, as a team, decided that this year, for the second half of the year, we are really focusing on socio-emotional stuff with our kids. We're trying to make more connections, trying to get them to role-play things a lot more. Now, we've only had one, one time doing this, but the kids were really engaged. It was, it was really impressive to see a whole classroom, actually two classrooms of kids combined, that were really engaged in talking about relationship issues. And so that's about where we are now. We hope to build upon this as time goes on and continue.
So the Equity Office supports in a variety of different ways. One being, some of the book studies that are going on, we provide the materials for the school site in order for them to conduct that. To continue the conversation with our actual practitioners that are in the field, I'd like to introduce Cindy Johnson, who is the principal of Stanley Elementary.
Good evening. These things scare me. Good evening to all of you, and the first slide, oh, can you put the other one on first? This one, okay. So I have to show all these beautiful words, all the charts, all the graphs, everything that you hear, the policies. At Stanley, we have to put into practice every day. You know, it's really easy to write something, but can you demonstrate it every day? And you have to live and breathe it and understand that there's a couple things. Now, I only have two minutes, so if I start talking quick, okay, just come see this at Stanley. But our belief is so strong that we have to have a culturally responsible community all the time. It's all or nothing. I mean, that is our belief. When you put up the circles, and we're only talking about two tonight, they're all important. Every one is important. And so what I'm wanting to do today is to hit two things, how we put this into practice. First one is language. At Stanley, I do not believe that a child was born with an HC on their bottom, highly capable, or that a child was born with SPED, or title, or issues, okay? We put children artificially into boxes because that's how they come into our schools categorically. That stops an inclusive academic. We say things because we all have different meanings for words. So a child is a child is a child. So if you look at this academic, and I, and you look at this Stanley, and you look at Stanley, you look at the splatter plots, now show the other one. So which one tells you more? Which one demonstrates a culturally responsive classroom community? Is it the other one? Or is it this one? And why would it be this one? Because this is a story of four children who came in, and our belief is every child and every parent and every family contributes to our knowledge base. They contribute. They don't take anything from us. They contribute because we set up, oh, boy, they, we set up, and we had the most, we had the most unbelievable, what we thought, unbelievable ELA blocks in September. We were flying high. These four and about eight others told us we were dead off. We had to listen to them. They're not a dot on a splatter, they told us. The children didn't have any resiliency. They had to make a leap from second to third. And when you watch them in large groups, so Shaprice Jamerson, Melissa Collins, Tonya Hendricks, and my instructional facilitator coach, Jill Jackson came to me and says, "We're not listening to the children. We're not." And so within 24 hours, we had flipped an entire week and a half worth of work, thinking, this is what our children needed. Now, that's academic equity. And I, oh, my goodness gracious, look, see the one on the end, JT? Uh-huh, he's driving me nuts now. He is walking around with his notebook, his ELA notebook, saying, "Would you like to read my citing? I just read this book, and I've got three paragraphs, and I'll teach you how to cite." They didn't know what resiliency was. And so when you look at this, our goal is to watch our language, and our other goal is to build resiliency and success, because if we teach those skills, they will speak for themselves. And really, they just needed a smaller group. We just revamped everything. They got the exact same core as everybody else, but their style and how they learned. Shaprice Jamerson literally only talked about guided reading and these amazing things with them for four weeks to boost their confidence. She taught them how to talk. She taught them what they needed. Now, these four and about 11 others are teaching other third graders how to write, how to cite. Now, we got a long way. They came in, JT, he just made 85, 84 points on his I-R-E-D-I. Now, is he at grade level yet? Well, he's close. Almost. So what we term an academic equity is a culturally responsive classroom community. We watch our language, and we look at every child as a contributor. And they taught my teachers and myself more about what it means to be an administrator and how to systematically do an approach for every child to be successful. They're, they're the teachers. When you really want to look at it, they're the teachers to help us develop a better system.
So access is the second practice that we want to discuss tonight, and that's around engaging all students in rigorous learning. And as a segue from Cindy, in order for students to have access, they have to be set up for success, they have to be in an environment that cultivates success for them, and therefore, when teachers are thinking about initiatives, it's about trying to make sure that everybody's aligning the initiatives so that they can be the most effective. So access through professional development, springboard alignment with fidelity, equitable classroom and engagement strategies and practices, high-yield strategies, self-5D, and closest practices such as co-teaching, these are all things that, when looked at in silos, seems like a whole lot of different work, but it's really all the same work. I'd like to also introduce John Hines, not really introduce, but he's here. He's our instructional facilitator for our department, and he is in the background back there. As a result of all of the preparation that goes into preparing yourself as an educator to be ready for the students, it requires some instructional strategies practiced, and John Hines is a phenomenal staff developer and leader in professional development, so I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. He is ours, and he's for everybody, so I encourage teachers all the time, take, sign up for every class he's taking. Next slide is access, and so on the slide is a whole list of different ways that we empower our students and remove barriers so that they can progressively have access to rigor in our district. We emphasize a college and career-going culture at the middle level to assist students with opportunity to see college as an attainable goal and prepare them with the strategies in order to be successful in high school and beyond. There's strong college-going skills that include organization, note-taking, inquiry, collaboration, critical reading and writing strategies. And students also learn how to identify and utilize available resources for support when struggling academically through self-advocacy, which is huge, and creating collaborative study groups. One of the things I would like to highlight from a workshop that I was at earlier today is someone in the group said, "It's fine to provide access for students to courses and programs, but if the same exclusive biased culture remains within the classroom, it's for naught." So the link between culturally responsiveness and access is, is highly, I mean, is strong. You can't have one without the other. And so that's what our office likes to emphasize. It's in order to provide access, there's got to be more than just the opportunity. There has to be someone there that's actually flourishing and guiding them and cultivating that learning environment for the student. So we have Amanda Christosimo here from Lincoln. She is one of our teachers, and she's going to talk a little bit about AP courses at Lincoln and how they've developed over time.
Hi, thank you for having me. Like Justina said, I'm from Lincoln. I'm representing a lot of AP teachers at Lincoln, so I hope that I do them justice tonight. Lincoln's mission, part of Lincoln's mission is to ensure success beyond high school for our students, and one of the big ways that we do that is through AP courses. We know the statistics, the College Board prints out the statistics all the time. Kids who take AP in high school graduate on time. Kids who take AP in high school graduate at higher rates than their peers. Kids who take AP in high school get better grades in college, and they stay there. We know that that's super important for our kids, and we need to get their butts in the seats, to say it plainly. And that's our goal, is to do that. And so we are, like Justina said, we are offering more. If you look at the slide, we have more courses offered, we have more seats offered. I think we have five different teachers teaching AP Human Geography to freshmen this year, just because we want every kid in that seat. We want them to have that opportunity. And so some of it is about opportunity, but what Justina was saying is true. If we don't change the narrative in those classes, nothing else is going to change. And so when I was trying to think about, when I saw these numbers, and I was trying to think about what we're doing differently, the biggest thing I can think about is that we have changed the paradigm about what an AP student looks like. If you go to other schools or other districts, or when I go to trainings and talk to people about teaching AP, they always have this concept, this very elitist concept, that there's an AP student, and these are the kids that you let into AP. And these are the activities you do in the first two weeks to get those non-AP students out of your class, so you don't have to worry about them anymore. And we don't do that at Lincoln. If you walk through the doors and you want to be an AP student, you're an AP student. And so we open the door to whoever wants to be there. We encourage kids who may not have signed up on their own to sign up anyway. I started teaching AP Psychology this year as a science teacher. It was a leap outside of my usual, my usual realm, and two-thirds of my AP site class this year are kids I've known, I knew already. There were kids last year who were like, "I don't know, I don't know that I can do AP." And I told them, "Hey, I'm going to learn it right along with you." And so many kids say, "If you're, okay, if you're teaching it, I'll take it. If you're teaching it, I'll take it. If Mr. Bowling's teaching it, I'll take it. If Ms. Jansen's teaching it, I'll take it. If Ms. Teague is teaching it, I'll take it. No matter what, no matter what your reading score is, your math score, we don't care. We're going to, we're going to build that relationship with you, and we're going to work through it together." And it does require more support, and there are some days where I'm like, "Why am I doing this?" And, you know, and I'm teaching skills that you might not have to teach if you only let AP kids in. I did have to teach note-taking. I bought notebooks for all my kids. I bought pens so they can color-code their notebooks. I'll just give them out. I don't care. I'll keep buying those as long as you keep doing your notes. I need you to be ready for college and get there, and I need you to believe that you can, and that's a big thing, is we build those relationships so they believe that they can, and then when they find success, they continue to have success. And I'll, and one of the things Nate Bowling says all the time that I love is that kids will work and they'll produce things for people that they respect and that they know care about them. And that's why we have the success that we have in our academic programs and our athletic programs. Kids at Lincoln know we care about them, and we know they respect them, and they'll, they'll do the work for us, no matter what, what the work is. So thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you, Amanda, Cindy, and Matt. We thought that it was real important that we hear voices from our practitioners who are out in the field, working with our student population every day. So we need to look in terms of what are our next steps for cultural responsiveness. And I use that term because I, I think that sometimes we get hung up with language. I don't use the term competence, because when we, when we think of this, it is a journey, and you can never become totally competent. There's just too many things out there in terms of cultural, culturals, cultures that we can't know at all, and so it's a journey that we all take. We've made great progress, but we also acknowledge that we have a long way to go toward improvement. It truly takes a village, and we are inspired by the support of the board and other organizations and agencies through Graduate Tacoma and other partners that we have to do this challenging and meaningful and rewarding work. We need to revisit the commitment, expectations of the district equity team to provide a clear job description of offering compensation for time and effort. The work must be embedded in the district master calendar, so culturally responsive training is not seen as a separate discussion or a separate body of work. It is the work. One of the models that we've carried on for the last two years is that this is everyone's work. Equity is everyone's work. There's already an alignment with the Equitable Classroom Practice, AVID, and TWC. However, the alignment will be made more clear so that teachers don't feel overwhelmed but realize that the work overlays and that it is part of the 5D instructional framework. Students learn better when they see themselves in the curriculum and part of the learning community. Hopefully, over time, a more comprehensive alignment of standards, embedding honest and inclusive American history through social studies and civics will be developed. Additionally, more student voice opportunities will be encouraged as we develop, as we develop systems for student support. Examples: Black and Brown Summit, which our students attend, Villa Crispa, Yell, AP Summer Bridge, et cetera.
And next steps for access, I won't read all of those bullets there, but one of the suggestions I have is to make sure that our spring work is around vertical alignment, middle to, I mean, elementary to middle and middle to high, and that all those great strategies that are happening, happening at each of those levels gets translated across as the students go from one grade level to the other, but especially transitioning from one structure of institution to another. Having those conversations, you know, whether it's at Data Day or whether it's opportunities for teachers to get together and visit sites, however it looks for people to come together and say, "I want a smooth transition for my students when they're leaving my school to come to your school. What does that look like? What do they need to know and be able to do before they get to you?", and so on and so forth. So expanding and refining current practices that are already happening that are great work. We had three examples of great things happening at schools, but there's great things happening across the district at many schools. And as we've engaged in this work, we've realized that teachers and other, it's not just teachers, but counselors, instructional facilitators, and coaches have become bolder and more excited about the work around how equity aligns with instructional practices. And so just expanding and refining in those areas and building more district-wide capacity. And our last work, the last thing that we want to reiterate is that we still have a lot of work to do. A lot of things have happened, we've, we've improved. A lot of things have happened, we've, we've improved, but equity is not a strategy, equity is a mindset. And we have to continue to develop that mindset around equity as it is embedded in everything that we do. So equity is everyone's work and we still have a lot more to do. So, thank you.
So we all just came from a district equity meeting tonight. We left a little early, actually.
We're all craved up. We're all ready to go.
And it's been, it's been an amazing journey from three years, three or four years ago when, like she said, there were like 12 or 15 people. And now we have at least, how many people would you think there were?
There were easily 40 to 50 people there. So that concludes our presentation, the formal part of our presentation, and we would love to answer any questions or hear your thoughts.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for your report. And as far as questions go, I'll look to my peer on the board first. Director Viall, you have questions?
Yeah, I do. I have more comments, I think, than questions. Think about how far we have come in that time. And I remember talking with Patrick and said, you know, "You had me come up there, over there at PDC about four o'clock with Mr. Jewans." And that's when I said, "We need an equity policy." And look how far we've come. But I think the main thing for me is just all of you talking about practice and how we're translating the verbiage into the practice. And that's the key. You know, we can all write policies and stick them in a drawer and check them off. Yeah, we have an equity policy, we have what have you. But really, what I'm seeing now is what we've all kind of thought up here could happen. And it's hard work, I know that. One thing I wanted to, Justina, could you explain, I know a lot of people have asked me, what is springboard alignment? That's a term that we use. And just so people that are watching it or whatever, when they hear that, what does that actually mean?
Well, Springboard initially started, is a pre-AP college board curriculum for language arts. And it initially started in the middle school. And so our middle school's teachers were trained on how to implement the Springboard curriculum into their, curriculum into their classrooms. And then high school adopted Springboard at the ninth and 10th grade. And so that alignment piece is number one, looking at Springboard with fidelity in the practices and the lesson plans, making sure that we're practicing Springboard with fidelity, but also the alignment of skills and strategies that are going to be necessary for our students to be successful in high school and aligning that with the 5D. The 5D is the teacher evaluation, but also more importantly than the evaluation, is a framework for teaching and learning.
It's our instructional framework that we adopted, what, six years ago or so?
Right.
And that we use. I do have a comment about civics. Having spent a lot of my career teaching in higher education, political science and what have you, and understanding what that means, and we need to implement that, I think, given current environments and things that we see in our country, to understand that what is the moral fodder of this country? It's our history. And the civics gives us that framework for understanding the morals of what we do as a, as a culture and as a people. You do not teach science in a vacuum. And I think all you've got to do is look at Nazi Germany for that. They had scientists that were building rockets in, in a vacuum and thought they were doing pure science and not understanding what the impact of those, those things were. And when you learn civics and you learn history and you know, understand, and there's one great philosopher once said, "Those who ignore history are bound to repeat it." This is my little soapbox because this is something that, you know, my doctoral studies were in this area, in American and government. And we have gone away from, and I know why, because we've been asked to do so much other stuff. But I would, I would ask us to take a look at how can we integrate our civics, rather than teaching it in a vacuum, into what we do teach, our language arts, our math, our science? And I think we can do that when we start talking, and an integrated curriculum makes more sense than teaching it in a silo. And the kids understand it and they say, "Oh gee, yeah, I see what that's all about." And, and an honest history about, as Patrick mentioned, African-Americans, Native Americans, women, that we aren't just teaching white, excuse the expression, I call it white boy history. And that's what we need to get away from. And a lot of our history books, a lot of our, you know, the stuff that I used to teaching in graduate classes was white, male-centered. And I think we need to work as a district, and I would hope that we would, and I would ask the superintendent and hopefully my colleagues on the board to support us in this, to help you to begin for us to be a lighthouse district developing an integrated curriculum on the teaching of civics for all of our kids, starting in kindergarten. Our little kids know what that's all about. They know what a flag is, they know and understand why and what that's about and why we are here. And particularly now, that with the exception of our Native Americans, we are. All came here from somewhere else. And to understand that that's a strength. And so that's the main thing that, you know, I would like to see us move forward in this in addition to the wonderful implementation, and I know this is top starts. And I, I really want to applaud, you know, I know how, how hard that's been to move this forward. And now it's got momentum, that's obvious. And now it's going to become part of what we do in the sustainability. And all you guys on the ground, I know you got to teach what we used to call a soft social science. Get teased. I used to say, "I'm not one of those," even though, because I do have degrees in econ too, and that's a hard social science. So just kidding, but anyway, thank you for all your work, John, what you do over at, you know, at Baker, and I know that, that's a lot of work that's over there and everybody. So that's, the only questions I had is comments, is, you know, this is amazing work. And Carla and I got to talk about that back in Washington DC and wish we would have had some of these numbers for our AP when we, we were there. They would have been blown away by it. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Hines?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening. It is comforting to hear how it's getting implemented. It's sometimes lonely being a policy setter because it takes a while for the implementation to really take root and produce the outcomes that you hope. And yet if we don't sit at the top and create policy, then you don't have the guidance and the framework that you need for implementation. So it's, it is very much collaborative and we've waited a while, as Director Viall alluded to, but it seems like it's starting to move in the direction that we had intended when we adopted the policy. I also am pleased to hear you talk about it systemically and as part of our culture. If you don't take a class, it's what we do, it's in our DNA. And I'm curious how we are, I hear anecdotally, I think there's still this sense of AP is elitist.
Yes.
It's a club. You get invited into it. It's selective. And we're turning that on its nose, but there's a resistance. There is a, there is an anti-culture that's existed. So I guess I'm going to put the superintendent in the spotlight. What are we doing then for evaluation of our teachers and our principals to make certain that they're abiding by this adoption of this approach as part of our culture systemically? And helping them be better engaged, but also making course corrections when needed?
So I, I really believe what, part of the answer to your question is what Justina said, is it's part of the culture. So I find we're, we are spending less time saying, "Hey, you know, what does that look like?" I don't know, Josh may be hammering them about it. I, I'm not, because I believe that they are, our, our, our high school principals are competitive, so they want more AP classes. You know, so Amanda, I have those stats right out there, and I think that's because everybody is really invested in it. And I think the fact that also, that it is diverse and that we are pushing diverse stu, you know, pushing all of our students to get in. And, you know, I love the idea of that ninth grade AP geography class, because that's one that's fun and you can learn lots of stuff and kids can get excited about it. And so they kind of get fooled into AP before they really know what happened. And I, I think I told the board once that I went into AP classes and asked, you know, I wanted to find out who are the kids that were pushed in? And most of them say, "Yeah, I'm doing really well and, you know, it's great and I'm getting a good score and get me out of here." So, you know, it's just evidence that they have to be pushed into it and they have to get the scaffolding and they have to work. But I think the culture is changing, you know, the impression that you've got to be, you know, an egghead to get in and that, that's the only way you can pass it.
So are we formally assessing and evaluating teachers and principals? How, we're a data-driven organization that measures everything.
Fantastic. We certainly have as a benchmark the number of AP classes that you have in your building and the number of students that are taking them. So that's definitely a benchmark.
But how do we get at the, the pushback? Because we've seen it in correspondence that we've received from districts, especially when we first adopted the, the new advanced placement, yes, the academic acceleration policy, where there were people that were on the ground level that were not supportive of the policy and the direction that was given. So how do we determine how that's working so that we can then identify gaps and determine is it, how do we help move more people? Because I, anecdotally, I think, in AP classes alone, that's a data point, but I don't think it's the all-encompassing data point. We could have a ton of AP offerings and people in the classroom that are adamantly against letting other people into the club. So how do we assess that to hold ourselves accountable?
So I think it's timing to, with all the narrative out there, to trust but verify. And being a data-driven organization, we trust and verify. I would say, before I make any more comments, we have amazing classroom teachers and building leaders that are changing and pushing back on a national narrative and proving folks that it can be done. So you adopted a policy in late 2012, really got implemented in 2013. You gave some time for that. Twenty-seven point nine percent of the juniors and seniors in 2013 took an AP and IB, college and high school are running start class. Your first semester in 2017, juniors and seniors, that number is at 70%. So I think we also have to honor the work that's being, happening in the buildings and not from a perspective of, "Oh, this is that thing that we all hear as adults. The kids and the folks are living the dream that you have created." It's trust and verify. Trust, trust that they're doing those work, but verify through the enrollment, through the success criteria. The ultimate goal is that every kid has that experience at some phase, an industrial certification, a verified acceptance letter, as well as a high school diploma. And so we have more work to do. We're not, I heard Patrick, I think, just mentioned that we're not finished. And, and it, our work is a little bit like Groundhog Day, is, is next year we'll have a different group of folks with some new teachers and some new principals. Hopefully not a new deputy superintendent, but my plug, some days my boss. And so I guess my, is, is we just keep working at it and grinding on it and building people's capacity, asking what the support is needed. We, I've been engaged in conversations without telling you who, with middle school principals saying, "Why can't middle school kids take AP classes?" And the reality is, is they can. And they can take AP exams. And so we're not done, but let's be cautious about, as long as the numbers continue to move the way that we are seeing, that we are not perpetuating a, a national narrative that is not applicable in Tacoma.
Yeah. The other thing I think is that there's evidence in the amount of scaffolding that's going on, not just for, not just for students. So, you know, I, I see the bridge classes, summer bridge classes for our youngsters all the time, so they're getting that scaffolding to go into. But on the other hand, so we're getting more mainstream teachers that are getting trained in AP so they can deliver, you know, that high-level instruction. And so to me, that's evidence that there's a, there's a, you know, that's starting to be mainstream, that it used to be, you know, you had five AP teachers in the school and don't let any other kid buy there or try to teach. But that's not true anymore. So, you know, we have ma, you know, we have mainstream, ninth grade teachers teaching an AP class is, is to me, evidence that's, you know, that's made a difference. And if you look at some of the literature that talks about, you know, how do you know when rigor has become mainstream? One of the indicators is ninth grade teachers teaching an AP class.
So two things that have happened within the last couple of years. The first time I ever heard about vertical alignment with AP and was a couple of years ago, when we had a speaker come in and we, he worked with some of our teachers, our AP classroom teachers. Last year we did the first year for summer bridge. It was a twofer for us because in the morning, our teachers were being, they had professional development in the morning. And then in the afternoon, they came in, they worked with students. So they were able to take the strategies and skills that they were learning in the morning and apply them directly in the afternoon with a group of kids. Last year we serviced a hundred and...
About 170.
About 170 kids for summer bridge, which was a three-day program. This year, the plan is even bigger and better. We're hoping to have at least 300 kids that we service for summer bridge. We've also started to make connections out in the community with universities where we will have partnerships with them so that, one of the things that we hear from College Board is that the most successful bridge, summer bridge programs for AP are usually held on college campuses. So we're looking at partnerships that will help us to do that as well.
And AP is just one example, right? So that the alignment in the MYP and the PYP programs that lead into the IB programs, the international baccalaureate and the middle years program and the primary years programs at our elementary schools are culture pieces that we haven't seen that will ultimately continue to build this. This isn't, this is just the way we do business in Tacoma. High expectations for every student, every day. And when you see the, the culture that's in, in examples locally, it, it's contagious. With that said, we can't stop monitoring and verifying. One other piece is, you know, in 2013, we had point two fresh, percent of the freshmen take one class, point two percent. This year, that number's at 22%. And so you can see that culture just continue to build and spiral up and it's exciting. With that said, you spend local levy dollars to remove barriers. I just read on the, the news today about fundraising opportunity for kids to take AP exams. And how disgusting is that? That we're having to, that people are choosing to raise funds so they, no, you folks said that's going to happen. And will improve quality. And the last piece I'll say is, is even when we've gotten pushback recently, we've found that that pushback isn't about intent, it's that sometimes there's a misperception that it's only AP. So I want to take a moment right here and say, "This isn't just AP. We've used AP as an example." College and the high school, great, but let's make sure that every kid has access to the exams, that they can earn credits. And we've been able to work and partner with other schools inside of our district to make sure that we are meeting the intent of the policy, but clearly not saying it only has to be AP or clearly only IB or clearly only college and high school. But let's make sure that they have access where they are. I'll stop.
Can I just add one thing to that too? I'm sorry. I think also ramping up the degree of professional development that we're offering to our teachers, both teachers of AP, IB, but also to other teachers who just want to learn more about strategies for supporting students. And so bringing John on board, John Hines, as our instructional facilitator, has certainly been a great resource for our staff. And trust me, they use him, they call him, they invite him in. He's in classrooms all the time and providing PD. Another thing is just making sure that our teachers have the resources that they need. And so John has been supporting that. We recently just did a bid to purchase graphing calculators so that we make certain our students have the tools in their hands to be successful on those exams when they come along. So just a couple more examples of the things we're trying to, I believe, the positive intent side is that the teachers want to do the right thing. We have amazing teachers, as Josh said, they need support. And so the summer bridge, tomorrow in your Friday report packet, you're going to see the first piece of information about summer bridge. We've already started the plan, it's well underway. Justina put together a great report for you tomorrow so you can see some of the tweaks and adjustments that the team has made to make it even bigger and better this, this summer. But then summer isn't, doesn't stop there and needs to continue throughout the year.
We, we heard about resilience and labels, particularly kids in elementary school level come in, they get labeled, and then that really impacts how they progress, how they perceive themselves, how others perceive them. So what are we doing at the elementary school level? I, I have three kids who are equally, who are uniquely gifted and intelligent in their their own way. No one smarter than the other. Of the three, one has been, uh, in the JAWS gifted program and the other two did not. So just living with those three. Right, I, I see it and I wonder, and, and, I, I guess I'm not certain even how to frame the question, but the, thinking about access and labeling and who has earned the right, who deserves to be in it, how do we allow all kids to, the, the one, the one child that's in the program, I see the things that he brings home and I'm like, yeah, the other two would like to do that as well. And he's no smarter than those other two. So what do we do to provide greater access? Because to me, it's more to do with the way the subject matter is being taught. It's not that it's so much more advanced that he's one of very few people that can grasp the concept. It's a more, it's a, it's a more fun way and engaging way and hands-on way.
I think one just, there's, it's a, there's a lot to the answer, but one way, uh, Mr. Johnson has led is helping bring gifted and talented options to every elementary school. And so that, uh, there's a recognition that there are certain, uh, programs that are truly unique, um, and, and, um, there's still that idea that you may have to travel to those, but every elementary school having a gifted and talented option helps build a culture there. With that said, you don't have to be gifted and talented to access AP, IB, or college and the high school. Having middle years program at our, uh, uh, schools helps build that culture and brings those same principles into all the different classrooms, the primary years program that allows that. And so as those feeder patterns become, um, you saw some boundary revisions that allow those feeder patterns to become more aligned, um, that allows more kids to have the same language and content pieces. Other schools are fostering that same high-quality, um, instruction and pedagogy that may just not be labeled as gifted and talented. And so we have, uh, high-yield strategies that our staff are trained and introduced and fostered at, across the district. The same strategies that would be accessed in a gifted and talented class are offered and trained for all the teachers so that all the students have access to them.
So can we remove the labels then? And then we don't?
Can I speak to that? Because elementary's a little bit different, we're in middle school and high school. Why go back, oh, excuse me.
Um, I just wanna go back to a mindset, is you, if you truly believe that children are contributors and you have the five D framework and children have to have access to the core, everybody's core looks differently. While we do away with labels, it's more of an adult issue and it, we as adults do it to children. So as we are planning, as we are taking professional development, as we are working with families and parents, I ask, well, I demand it from my staff, I don't ask, I say, just start talking about what the child can demonstrate. Look at the gifts, what are they contributing? I don't know how you do it district-wide, and at the elementary, it's very easy to look at children and you, if you, I'm sure you know the five D framework. Those student engagement strategies and the high-yield strategies, I have note-taking going on in first grade. Granted, it's a little primitive. In fact, I sent you a picture, okay? I took her a picture. First grade's doing high-yield note-taking strategies on penguins or something. I could, I went to my fifth grade and Mr. Hasi was taking note-taking strategies, every child. And they had, they could've had a lot of labels. He took Donald Trump's inaugural address speech and he took Barack Obama's. And they were comparing and contrasting, you talk about civics.
That's what I'm talking about.
And it was the high-yield strategies, note-taking, when I look at how teachers are planning. So when I talk about labels, we do it as adults. And so when you start systematically planning at your elementary, every child is not a dot. When a child speaks, and every child should have quality education and engagement strategies, that's why they did not come out of the womb with an HC on their rear end, highly capable. They ca, huh? Did yours? Well, uh, yeah, so our goal, and I can't speak for all elementaries, but I know that today we had a PD that was amazing. And how we're doing, what's it called, our, our, uh, well, we call it full court press, it's Stanley, okay? But we're taking the standards, we're re-teaching, we're doing all these different kinds of things for eight weeks. That's your data-driven. So labels are something we do as a district. But it's very easy not to have labels in your building.
So I would encourage us to think about...
So the highly capable programming is required by Washington State. I think that Patrick is doing a good job of, um, working to make sure that each school has a system of educating students so that, um, they all have access to, um, uh, 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 you know, several different strategies. It's a transition, we're not there yet, just like we're not there with, you know, with the special ed students and making sure that they have access to mainstream education. So it's, it's a, it's a project in process, we're not there yet, and we are confined by la, uh, by some labels from the state.
I think for us to get Word of Matter, and we've led in a number of areas, and we can help build the new lexicon, because Cindy nailed it. It is, kids just want fun and different ways to learn and to be challenged. Parents want to be able to say, my kid's in the gifted program, right? That's, uh, I see it all the time, it's a status. It's my kid's smarter than your kid 'cause he's in the gifted program. I'm like, but that's nonsense, they're eight, right? They're, who knows? Who knows where they're going? So I would ask us to continue to have the conversations around the labels and how we talk about it, because I think you get kids conditioned at an early age to think, I am not capable, I am not worthy. And then through your hard work, we may be able to convince them otherwise, but why start off on that? Why not start them off with, I am capable, I am worthy, I'm just as smart and gifted as everyone else, I may perceive things differently? And start that conversation now, because the state, I would argue, has a lot that they could glean from what's going on in Tacoma. We're, we're, I think we're easily ten years ahead of where the state is in terms of how we approach things. And so let's continue to be, and we don't know everything, but we've come up with some stuff that seems to work pretty well. So how do we lead on that? And that's, so just the closing thing I throw out is, what do you need more or else from the board and from CAB to continue this great work that's going on at the building level?
So the service models that will be in place for next year, uh, for highly capable, or, you know, that we're doing away with, with the JAWS, which was the one day a week enrichment. Gifted kids are gifted all the time. It allows them to be, uh, in classrooms with general ed kids, regular ed kids. And so the flexibility, uh, for other students to receive that type of instruction would also, uh, be a part of the classroom. So we, we really need help with, um, support in terms of helping teachers to, to better understand how to differentiate by content, product, and process, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick thing, uh, so that summer bridge, I, I really pushed that for like twenty years, that we should do something between the middle school, uh, elementary, middle school and high, middle school and high school. So that's really good and nice to know that the numbers are being increased. Um, my grandson took, um, AP, the AP test as a junior and passed for English, and he did not take, uh, AP class. So there are really great teachers out there who really struck the students well, so, um, I want to give kudos out there to those teachers who do a really good job without being labeled, uh, you know, an AP teacher. Um, I was interested in your comment about, um, AP at Lincoln and the note-taking that you have to teach the students, because I thought that AVID, which so many students are in in middle school, really taught that for three-year, that skill. And I do know that we have kids coming in our district, you know, maybe haven't had that program, but what are you seeing, um, for preparation out of that program? Or is, is note-taking different when they get to high school?
Um, we don't have AVID at Lincoln anymore.
Well, yeah, but they probably had it in middle school, that's...
Yeah. Um, I think mostly the notes taking, it's not a, it's not note-taking strategies as much as it is, how do you get through the volume of material in an AP class that you're not used to? And so teaching them Cornell notes and those note-taking strategies are great, but how do you apply that from two pages, you know, you used to have to read at night, to maybe twelve or fifteen, just 'cause we have four days to get through this chapter?
Okay.
And so it's more about, how are you going to pick out the most important? And how are you gonna use the standards from the AP test to help yourself, highlight what's important, really focus your studying in on what they've already said is going to be on the test, let's focus on that. And then that applies to any school. Lincoln is all standards-based in our grading as well. And so the expectation is that we give out rubrics before chapters and units for all of our students, and it's the same strategy. How do you read that rubric to know, what is it I need to know how to do and show and demonstrate? And so it's the same thing in an AP class or a gen ed class or an, an anywhere class, is how do you figure out what you need to learn and meet that standard or exceed that standard? And what do you have to do it? And how do you do it in the most efficient way possible? And so it's not so much a note-taking strategy as a, maybe it's more of a time management strategy for AP kids.
Thanks. And, um, and then for middle school, I, uh, it's, it is concerning that you see more immature students, uh, so I guess that's a conversation for a later time. Um, and I, I always did think that those JAWS programs were great for all children. And I would really like to see, like Google does, you know, twenty-five percent of your day, the teachers can do some creative things and teach in a different way. I'd like to see more of that in our district. Not twen, not twenty-five percent, but, you know, start with like ten percent or something. And something that's passionate for some of the teachers, they should be able to teach those students and get them all excited. So thank you for all your presentations.
Thank you, Director Wenzel. Director Cobb?
I have a couple of comments. My first one, I want to chime in on this gifted and highly capable and JAWS conversation. As a second, third grader in the JAWS program in Tacoma School District myself, I feel like part of the challenge with JAWS, how it had been in the past, is, and it res, I think this kind of resonates with the comment Director Hein said about parents and, and our house too, not knowing why one child is in the program or not. I think, oh, sorry, I think it goes back to, uh, further conversation maybe that needs to be had about the nature of giftedness. Kids are not gifted in all areas. And I think that oftentimes families don't know the specific area that, or the reason why their child is identified and then can't make, can't discern between their kids and why one is in and one isn't. I think that was the case in my situation, I don't know why I ended up in the program and I don't know why one of our kids was in the program and the others weren't, but I think focusing in on those areas in which kids need differentiation in order to access basic education gets us more focused on getting the students the supports they need that often do require additional resources because teachers can't differentiate to meet every, always differentiate effectively to meet every need of every child. So sometimes, like in the English learner program, those labels can be helpful when it's about getting the student the support they need. So I'd just love more conversation about that. Um, my other comment was to say that, um, when I think about the equity mindset and the work that you're all doing, I just want to tell you, first, I really appreciate it. And when I think of, of the effort, it's about really changing the way that we interact with students to meet them where they are. So when I go back to slide ten, where you, where you asked the question, which one shows cultural responsiveness, I land on ten, because there's evidence there to me of something good happening. When you look at Stanley, it's, it's marked in the high poverty, high achievement area of quadrant of the slides. So if I look at that evidence, it's high poverty, high achieving, what's going on there. So just a different brain from yours, this makes me think that something's good, it's happening. Um, my other, the last kind of couple of comments, um, I appreciate hearing that you all are having courageous conversations at BAC and I appreciate the attention to the words and the, um, the words and how we talk about kids and how we talk about this work. So this last comment is, takes a little bit more courageous effort on my part, because I found that in the course of this conversation, and it's a sensitive topic and you don't wanna, um, say anything negative, 'cause you don't want people to shut down, but I just want to say that in the course of the conversation, I found myself having that feeling in my gut a couple times, like, what did you mean by that? So I don't want to go into specifics, but I just want to be a part of the work of continuing to evaluate how we talk about kids, how we refer to the challenges and trying to meet students where they are. And so I'd love to follow up on that, but I just felt like it was important to say just in case anybody else had a weird feeling at any point in the conversation, that we're all learning together and we all hear and respond to things differently. And as a team, I think we'll keep it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I want to second what she said, all of it, and then I'll go on. But anyway, uh, I'm gonna start at the beginning of my comments, which was, when you're talking about professional development, about equity, is it optional or is it required?
It's optional.
So one of the things that, um, we struggle with, um, this year as we're, um, developing layers of support for teachers is providing lots of professional development opportunities around cultural responsiveness and awareness, um, but also know that we're competing with other initiatives, or not necessarily initiatives, but training that, um, teachers need to have. And, um, having these, um, workshops in, at, in the evening after school is out is often even more taxing after they've taught all day. And so we are trying to put our heads together to create some type of way, um, to develop a system so that teachers can get this embedded, like we said, everyone's work, at their sites, whether it's on Data Day, um, or whether it's, um, through professional development where we can get, um, we're currently working in partnership with WEA, um, and they do trainings on cultural responsive classroom management. And I love the fact that we're partnering with them because it sends the message that just because I didn't get this training when I was going through teacher college, doesn't mean that I'm exempt from having to, um, implement these strategies in my classroom. And so the fact that WEA and I are, and the team are, um, on board with each other, um, is really impactful. So, um, we're working with WEA, um, and then we'd like to get, you know, put our heads together as well to figure out, how can we implement and embed the professional development into the regular practices that teachers are, are doing at their building site? So the district equity team in itself is a group of people, one representative from every building who comes and meets with us once a month, gets strategies that they can then take back to their cla, to their school sites and lead those, um, activities and conversations at their site. So that was, that's why we're so excited that we have representation from every school this year. Um, so we just, um, you know, trying to build capacity so that it's not two people who are providing professional development and that it's embedded within the school year, um, is, it's what we're working on trying to.
The work is not optional, I don't want anybody to think that the work is optional. It is not optional. It's access in many different varieties. We have the same issues that anybody does, which is the teacher that you wish was there at the intense one is not, you know? And so we still have to work on that. But, uh, you know, Director Hein's talked about accountability as far as evaluation for teachers and evaluation for principals. And your response to, uh, engagement of all students and the academic achievement of all students and your engagement, that is on the evaluation. So it is not optional. And that doesn't mean that we're not like any public, uh, institution, which is, we've got a range of where people are, I think that's me, a range of where, you know, people are with implementation. We have teachers that have a lot more work to do and then teachers that are at every class that are already incredible and really doing the work. And so that'll be something that we continue to work on. But I've also heard principals having courageous conversations with teachers saying, hey, it's time for you to get off the dime, not, not that way, but, um, you know, that it, you need to push and you need to go to the next step.
Okay, so the training is not optional, but doing the work of equity, uh, the training is optional, but doing the work of equity is not optional?
The training is optional. And, you know, and sometimes what happens is in the building, is that as a building team, we agree that we're gonna have the, a training at our site and we're gonna do it, and here's the work we're gonna do. So I don't know, does every, I think every, does every school have a plan for what their path is going to be? And so that's where you find the accountability is in that plan.
Sure. I guess, you know, again, we're looking at data all the time, right? So as we talk about this, I think, um, that the work that we're doing is so important and so extraordinary. So if I'm, if my student happens to be with a teacher who hasn't bothered to opt into any of these classes, you know, is, is there actually different access being provided in that classroom? And how do we know that? That'd be great.
I think one of the things that, um, as a teacher, one of the things is that we push on each other. And so I think when we get exposed to these ideas, you know, we take them back to our buildings and people who can't go to these meetings, we have conversations with them and they take those ideas and they start running. And I've had very uncomfortable conversations with people who, their mindset is firmly locked in nineteen-fifties education systems. You know, where it's my way or the highway. And we've had, I mean, you know, we've had some pretty intense conversations about that. So your teachers are doing that work. We are bringing that back to the buildings and we are spreading it as, as we can go. But what we're seeing too is, as new teachers come in, they have that mindset now too, 'cause they are seeing it out in the world and they're seeing what happens when you, when you have that closed mindset. So they're coming in with it kind of already... So they're coming in with it, kind of already speaking the language of equity. So I think it's a slow process, but from, from the trenches, to use that term, um, you know, we're affecting change ourselves, because I don't know of any teacher who, who doesn't want to be effective, you know? And so one of the ways that you're effective is you, you push each other to be more effective. If it works in your classroom, can I use it? Okay, it didn't work in my classroom, you know, what did I do wrong? You know, we open our doors, we, my door is always, anybody can walk in my door, if I'm having a horrible day, come in my room, I don't care. And our whole building's like that, we go into each other's room, so we're constantly like pushing on each other.
Sure, I appreciate that, and I don't want to at any point undervalue the amount of work that you guys have done, especially being relative to the size of the entire district and not huge team, right? And I'll also note that it's transformational work by definition, so, um, in my mind, requiring somebody to go to a course doesn't necessarily do anything except then to get it to fill in bubbles. Um, embracing what you learn is a whole different thing.
The workshops and some of the training that's specifically housed in the Equity and Achievement Office are optional. There is work around equity that is above and beyond that.
Yeah, I got that.
That transcends the district. So Avid training, so if you're an avid teacher, you're getting Avid training that has equity elements in there. If you're going to high-yield strategies training, which is part of our required, there's equity infused in there. And so, I just don't want folks also to, that, these, these guys were great, they listed out several ones, but that's not the only equity work, uh, that, as far as even professional development and training that takes place, but it's very critical that they continue to build that as a strong framework and build it out. The senior, we, one thing we didn't even mention is, is the senior leadership team has been involved in equity training and conversations at the district level as well. And those are not optional, those are, the superintendent says, thou shall be there.
So can I, can I just add a little bit to that? Um, say for instance, like when they start, when we start to look at data, anytime that we disaggregate data, that's equity work, okay? And that is one of the things that, that all schools are supposed to be doing now. So, yes, some of the courses that we offer are optional, not having to be taken, but the work that's being done is on and ongoing, and we want to build that into so that it's systematically done. It's, it's, it's the way that we operate.
Yeah, and it's actually absolutely transforming into part of our DNA. I think that, um, our equity work is kind of like our innovative work that to us that see it every day, you forget to notice the things that are extraordinary. And everything that we've just mentioned now, I know is a, you know, the, the topping on a long series of, of, uh, actions that we've taken over the last several years. So, again, I don't mean to diminish that work, I'm just looking to make sure that we're covering the bases. Along those lines, I ended up in a conversation about TPS's equity work in relationship to optional enrollment with a Greener Tacoma student, um, doing a project in a class for neoliberalism in the neighborhood. Um, and I ended up talking to her about opting into AP classes and all these other things that she had no idea. Um, and in the end, we might have a future TPS teacher, because she was pretty darn excited. Because ultimately, as I, as we're, because we had this conversation and now as I was sitting here tonight, part of our conversation was about gentrification, which is certainly a concern that we need to have in our neighborhoods when we're looking at also the rising costs of housing. And I think that when we do things like opt everybody into AP and high rigor, we help resist gentrification by default. So, um, I just want to acknowledge that the kind of change that we're looking at is culturally transformative and stabilizing for our community in the long run, in my opinion. And I believe history will vet that out. So, uh, when, um, you were talking about, uh, opting students into AP and what that meant, and you mentioned that the most important things were care, respect, and rigor, I thought we need to capture that on tape. And then we need one of your AP students there too, so that other students know it. Um, because it's powerful for people to realize that. Uh, so I appreciate, uh, your passion and both your roots there too. Um, changing the subject a little bit, there was a posting on Facebook about a teacher at your school being joined and they, they're needing graphing calculators. You happened to mention graphing calculators. Is the graphing calculator challenge at Lincoln solved for the moment?
Uh, probably for the moment, but we will never, ever, ever, ever turn down graphing calculators.
Okay.
Like, I, so for example, when I'm not fumbling through AP psychology, I teach chemistry, which is also high math, and so most days it's take out your cell phone and do the math, but then on test day, I'm not letting you use your cell phone because you're not asking the internet about that.
Good job.
And it's a scrounge for calculators. Kids are running all over to any math teacher on their planning period, see if they can borrow a calculator for the test. So I think we are solved for the teachers we have, but if somebody's got some, we're gonna, I'm not going to turn them down.
And could you speak to what you were mentioning?
We, we just completed a, a RFP process for graphing calculators, and we'll be purchasing, um, well over $200,000 worth of graphing calculators for all of our high schools. Again, equity and access.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
So, uh, bids should go in, the bids are in, we found the lowest bid, obviously for a graphing calculator, we're always looking for the lowest bid. And so we'll be getting those into the hands of our students as soon as they arrive in the mail, we'll get them out to schools. The goal is to have them in the hands of our, our students prior to AP testing and SBA as well.
Fantastic.
So, and we, we continually buy graphing calculators. We have a nice chunky line item in our budget where we purchased several times for Lincoln and other high schools. This time, we're just kind of upping the, making sure the playing field is equal at all the schools, and so we had some budget that we could reserve and, um, tag specifically for that. So we're definitely taking care of that. So we'll have new graphing calculators, I shared that with your principal today.
That's exciting. Part of the reason I ask, because me, like other well-minded, uh, community members, sometimes open vast doors and find things that we believe are graphing calculators left over from our now-adult students. Is it worthwhile to drop those off someplace? I have no idea if it's-
Oh, yeah.
That's what I was going to ask, how old, what, what Texas ones, how far back do you go with them?
Uh, for me, my-
Sorry, I just, because I've got one at home.
Well, I wonder if we can just take what we have and drop them off at our closest high school and recommend the community do that too?
Sure.
I mean, the worst thing that could happen is that you might have a plethora of things to go through and maybe some end up donated to somebody else, but-
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
And I don't know if this is too much to share, but I even buy the $1 little ones at Target in August, just buy a bunch of those, because if you really understand the science behind it, you will be able to do the math on a little one, you don't need a, a big fancy one.
Oh.
So, we'll take anything.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Great to know, okay. Thank you.
We're also going to be putting together a couple webinars, just for someone like myself, who may not be as proficient at the use of a graphing calculator, like Amanda, who I'm going to come and learn from her, how to use a regular one to do that. We're going to put a couple webinars together as well, and just shoot them out for teachers if they're interested in, you know, going on and just getting a little tutorial, or perhaps students could use those as well. Most of them are fairly proficient, but we thought we would provide that, um, additional support in terms of professional learning along with the calculators.
That's fantastic, I would love to see that webinar personally, but, um, I'm going to go on to the next thing, which is the whole conversation about labels at the beginning. I mean, yeah, they are, we do need labels to a certain extent, but that doesn't mean that we need to use them around our kids. Um, I think that they do have an effect, not just on kids, but also on teacher attitudes, because kids end up with the same group of teachers for multiple years in a row, right? And so do their peers. Um, and I don't, uh, so I'm just going to second Scott's comments, I'm not really sure how we make people change their language, but frequently the way that it's been done is by changing it ourselves and leading by example. Um, and we've done that in every other way, I think that's a fantastic idea. Because really, I think it's probably at the grade school level that they're seeing the most of it, uh, because that's when they come in and get their labels in the first place. And as a parent, my kids are both out of school now, but I remember when they both got their labels, um, and that was frustrating. Um, and comment in relation to, to gifted, I think that one of the, and this is a totally different subject, so I don't expect an answer now. My personal opinion, I'm not an expert on gifted students, so I'll be clear right there. I think that, um, in my experience, that sometimes we identify, we fail to identify that there are gifted students who have, the strength here is a weakness someplace else, and then they're not offered the, the highly capable programs, and they end up kind of losing out in both areas. So, uh, and I, I'm seeing heads nodding, so I know that you know what I'm talking about. And I know that we're not the only district that's faced that challenge, but I also know that we're a district that can overcome it, because we can do anything with better minds too. To wrap it up, I just again, really appreciate all the work that you're doing and the work that everybody's on the ground doing. It is transformative, it is very important, and we can sit up here and make policy, but hearing, uh, the stories from on the ground, so to speak, is inspiring, um, at the very least, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate the work. Been waiting for us to get it done. It was worth the wait.
Can we also just thank the folks that came out from the field today? Matt, Amanda, and Cindy for being with us tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I actually had one more comment that I, is very important, but I forgot to mention. Um, Mr. Heinz talked about, uh, what are your obstacles or what resources that you need? I don't necessarily expect you to be able to give us a list right now, but this board in particular has always been trying to say, well, what are your obstacles? Because we can write policy, we can remove obstacles, and we can produce resources.